I'm just waiting for Bull Nax's TV. So we'll start.
So we're going to turn it up again?
On cue. Alright, everybody, the time is 6:00 PM. We are going to call to order the regular meeting of the initial of a regional school committee. Welcome, everyone. We begin normally with the Pledge of Allegiance. So please join us if you care to. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, invincible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on our agenda is going to be citizens' comments. And I'm seeing nobody in the room for that purpose. So we're going to move right ahead here to our next item. And that is executive session. So executive session is set to last for, you know, as long as it goes. We're hoping about 30 minutes. But so for the public who is interested in watching the meeting, they can come back in just a little bit after we set our motion. So I'm going to make the motion if you guys don't mind. So I move to enter into executive session at 6:02 PM pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares, which I do. Session to include the school committee, Superintendent Downing, Director of Human Resources, Jessica Murdock, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, Laura Friend, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Ross Malcarron, and Director of Student Services, Roman Demarche. The committee will reconvene to open session at the conclusion of the executive session. Do I have a second?
Second.
Maybe that to Ms. Cohen. So any discussion on the motion? While we're in the room, we can just do hand. So we have to do a roll call vote. So we're going to start with Matt. Yes or no?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Myself?
Yes.
Sharon?
Yes.
Jackie?
Yes.
And Jillian?
Yes.
So we are in executive session. I will.
We are back in regular session. Thank you so much for joining us still. As the agenda dictates, I would like to do, if there's no objection, I would like to move the superintendent's report. I'm going to take that back. I would like to go through the student representative report and just skip over the consent agenda, putting the consent agenda after the superintendent's report because it's all dependent. But let's let our student representative give his report. Everybody welcome Ryan Meecher to the next year of this school. Ryan is a fearless leader of the high school and we're glad to have you back. We look forward to whoever your counterpart will be. Who will join you soon, I imagine?
Yep. Yeah, Dr. Boynton is kind of working through that now. Obviously just getting started, so not too, too much going on. STUCO had their first meeting today, so they're starting to plan the Wolf Day, the Powerpuff and some kind of spirit, like spirit weeks to get everyone back into it. Working on planning the homecoming dance also from STUCO. And then on the athletic side of things, everything's getting started. We have 343 student athletes this season. Teams have started playing games and are doing well. And then the football opener is coming up on Friday. I worked a little bit and read the AI literacy presentation, which you guys will obviously see in a bit or learn a little bit more about. And then from like separate, the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives, which I'm a part of still, they're having their conference in kind of early to mid-October, which I'll be going there and then running a workshop there. So that's cool. I can continue that. And yeah, I hope to bring my counterpart along and get him introduced to the organization. But yeah, I think that's it for me.
Well done. Thanks, Ryan. Last year's school year is off to a good start. Cratchit's reserved. Not a great start, smart start. So do you guys have any questions for Ryan? You can ask me anything about his report or anything about the start of school.
Ryan, for anybody that's watching or that's new to the committee, can you explain what the Wolf Day is?
Yes. So the Wolf Day is kind of the newer version and what we include as like the pep rally because we felt like the kind of overall school spirit and involvement was kind of going down. So the Wolf Day is, it's a whole set of different games during school. We have shortened classes where people can go out and different clubs, different teachers host their own kind of activity for what they like. There's activities on the turf, in the gym, stuff like that. So everyone can kind of go out and hang out together.
What other questions do we have?
I was just going to ask if you know, you said Dr. Boynton was working on the new representatives. So once we know when that happens, I would like to coordinate with you and the student council coordinator to just get it on the calendar for the communications subcommittee to meet with student council.
So you know, Ryan also serves on the superintendent's advisory. And so Dr. Boynton and I meet with a group of students. I mean, with her next week to plan that. So we're hoping to get that on the books last week of September, beginning of October as well. So we'll get all those things launched and organized and put together. So it's exciting. Our superintendent advisory group is going to be working on developing what we're going to put into our time capsule that'll be put into the new building. So that's going to be the first thing that we work on.
That's exciting. Awesome. Ryan, can you, first of all, we have a couple of new members. And so right next to you is Matt Naughton. And way across the table, you do not need to get up. That's Jillian. And Jillian Timlin has her Matt Boynton. Guys, it's Ryan and he is in hot demand for students here as you can tell on these meetings. Ryan, can you just tell them a little bit about that Massachusetts organization that you?
So last year Superintendent Dowding kind of introduced the old student representative Ava and I to this organization. And what it is, it's student representatives on different school communities all across Massachusetts who meet together and basically kind of connect ideas and where we can each introduce different things that we learned from other kids into our own kind of atmosphere. And then further into that, there's different positions within that. Ava was the director of communications for that group and I was the director of resources. I still am right now the director of resources. So more specifically, what I do is reach out to representatives across the state and then I help them with writing school committee reports, like how to go to the meetings, what to do, what you should be prepared for and how to kind of connect with your teachers and kind of bridge the school to the school committee.
Well done. Awesome. So glad you're still doing that. Do you have any questions for Ryan? All right, Ryan, we look forward to another great year. As always, you can stay or you can go. I'm sure you're busy.
I'll stay for a little bit. You'll hear me wobble out in a little bit.
All right, great. So because there was no objection, we're going to move now on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, manager.
Thank you, manager. Tonight for the superintendent's report, I think I'm going to feel sort of like a master of ceremonies as various members of the team are going to have their voices into the report. I'm happy to say we've had a very successful opening to the school. Opening the school, you know, brings a lot of excitement and joy back into our towns again that is palpable. I hope you all had a chance to see some of that evidence that's been common the last two weeks, as I know Ms. Hannigan has worked hard to try to show, not just tell, what's happening in our school district. But it also brings adjustments, adjustments in transportation routes and assignments and things like that. So, you know, we spend the first couple of weeks of school working through the glitches, the bumps that we need to smooth out. So hopefully we're getting through those processes and carrying on. So with that though, in preparation for the school year, I want to shift gears over to Ms. Friend for a moment to talk to you about some summer work that occurred in the district.
Yeah, it's just a, thank you Superintendent Dowding, a quick update following the update in June that I had shared around our summer academy. So the committee will in large part remember that we hold a summer academy program for our Neshoba educators so that they continue their professional learning and continue to work on enhancements to our curriculum. So summer academy happened and it was well attended. We had not 200, but we had 180 teachers participate in summer academy this past summer. That's up from 110 the prior year. So great participation and thanks to our Neshoba educators. So I've listed for you some of the offerings that were included there in summer academy. You can see that some of them are related to specific initiatives.
We are back in regular session. Thank you so much for joining us still. As the agenda dictates, I would like to do, if there's no objection, I would like to move the superintendent's. I'm gonna take that back. I would like to go through the student representative report and just skip over the consent agenda, putting the consent agenda after the superintendent's report.
Sure.
Because it's all dependent. But let's let our student representative give his report. Everybody, welcome Ryan Meecher to the next year of this school. Ryan is a fearless leader of the high school and we're glad to have you back. We look forward to whoever your counterpart will be.
Yep.
Who will join you soon, I imagine?
Yep. Yeah, Dr. Boynton's kind of working through that now.
Great.
So, cool. Obviously, just getting started, so not too, too much going on. Stuko had their first meeting today, so they're starting to plan the Wolf Day, the Powerpuff and some kind of spirit, like Spirit Weeks to get everyone back into it. Working on planning the Homecoming Dance also from Stuko. And then on the athletic side of things, everything's getting started. We have 343 student athletes this season. Teams have started playing games and are doing well. And then the football opener is coming up on Friday. I worked a little bit and read the AI literacy presentation, which you guys will obviously see in a bit or learn a little bit more about. And then from like separate, the Massachusetts Association of Student Representatives, which I'm a part of still, they're having their conference in kind of early to mid-October, which I'll be going there and then running a workshop there. So that's cool. I can continue that. And yeah, I hope to bring my counterpart along and get him introduced in the organization. But yeah, I think that's it for me.
Well done. Thanks, Ryan. Last year's school year is off to a good start.
Thank you.
Crutches reserved. Not a great start, smart start.
Yeah.
So, do you guys have any questions for Ryan? You can ask me anything about his report or anything about the start of school.
Ryan, for anybody that's watching or that's new to the committee, can you explain what the Wolf Day is?
Yes. So the Wolf Day is kind of the newer version and what we include as like the pep rally, because we felt like the kind of overall school spirit and involvement was kind of going down. So the Wolf Day is, it's a whole set of different games during school. We have shortened classes where people can go out and different clubs, different teachers host their own kind of activity for what they like. There's activities on the turf, in the gym, stuff like that. So everyone can kind of go out and hang out together.
Well, what other questions do we have?
I was just gonna ask if you know, you said Dr. Boynton was working on the new representative.
Yes.
So, once we know when that happens, I would like to coordinate with you and the student council coordinator to just get a date on the calendar for the communications subcommittee.
Yep.
To meet with the student council.
Cool.
Great.
So, you know, Ryan also serves on the superintendent advisory. And so, Dr. Boynton and I meet with a group of students. I'm meeting with her next week to plan that. So we're hoping to get that on the books last week of September, beginning of October as well. So we'll get all those things launched and organized and put together. So it's exciting. Our superintendent advisory group is going to be working on developing what we're gonna put into our time capsule that'll be put into the new building. So that's gonna be the first thing that we work on.
Love that. That's exciting.
Yeah, it is exciting.
Awesome. Ryan, can you, first of all, we have a couple of new members. And so, right next to you is Matt Naught.
Yes, Mr. Naught.
And way across the table, you do not need to get up. That's Jillian. And Jillian Timlin has her Matt LaForte.
Yep.
Guys, it's Ryan, and he is in hot demand for students here, as you can tell at these meetings. Ryan, can you just tell them a little bit about that Massachusetts?
Yes.
Organization that you?
So last year, Superintendent Downing kind of introduced the old student representative Ava and I to this organization. And what it is, it's student representatives on different school communities all across Massachusetts who meet together and basically kind of connect ideas and where we can each introduce different things that we learned from other kids into our own kind of atmosphere. And then further, like further into that, there's different positions within that. Ava was the director of communications for that group, and I was the director of resources, and still am right now, the director of resources. So more specifically, what I do is reach out to representatives across the state and then I help them with writing school committee reports, like how to go to the meetings, what to do, what you should be prepared for, and how to kind of connect with your teachers and kind of bridge the school to the school committee.
Well done. Awesome. So glad you're still doing that. Awesome. Do you have any questions for Ryan? All right, Ryan, we look forward to another great year.
Yep.
As always, you can stay or you can go. I'm sure you're busy.
I'll stay for a little bit. You'll hear me wobble out in a little bit.
All right, great. So, because there was no objection, we're gonna move now on to the superintendent's report. I'm the manager of the committee.
Thank you, manager. Tonight for the superintendent's report, I think I'm gonna feel sort of like a master of ceremonies as various members of the team are gonna have their voices into the report. I'm happy to say we've had a very successful opening to the school. Opening the school, you know, brings a lot of excitement and joy back into our towns again that is palpable. I hope you all had a chance to see some of that evidence that's been common the last two weeks, as I know Ms. Hannigan has worked hard to try to show, not just tell, what's happening in our school district. But it also brings adjustments, adjustments in transportation routes and assignments and things like that. So, you know, we spend the first couple of weeks of school working through the glitches, the bumps that we need to smooth out. So hopefully, we're getting through those processes and carrying on. So with that, though, in preparation for the school year, I want to shift gears over to Ms. Friend for a moment to talk to you about some summer work that occurred in the district.
Yeah, it's just a, thank you, Superintendent Downing, a quick update following the update in June that I had shared around our summer academy. So the committee will in large part remember that we hold a summer academy program for our Neshoba educators so that they continue their professional learning and continue to work on enhancements to our curriculum. So summer academy happened and it was well attended. We had not 200, but we had 180 teachers participate in summer academy this past summer. That's up from 110 the prior year. So great participation and thanks to our Neshoba educators. So I've listed for you some of the offerings that were included there in summer academy. You can see that some of them are related to specific initiatives relative to our strategic plan. Some of the offerings help our teachers with relicensure requirements. And we also engaged in some pretty deep curriculum work over the summer. I've noted the participants there, shared that with the committee in June as well. Just to highlight some of the curriculum groups that engaged in curriculum work this past summer and not included in the report were Grade 9 World History, Grade 9 Physics. We continued our work on our portfolios and our work on Portrait of a Neshoba Graduate. Our chemistry team at the high school engaged in curriculum work. Our ninth grade English department engaged in curriculum work. Our world language department engaged in curriculum work. Our biology team engaged in curriculum work. And we also worked to help support integrated science curriculum writing for our K-10 class at the high school. That's just the high school. I would say that this work and those stipends that were associated with this work were funded by the deeper learning grant that we successfully acquired last year. And of course, we continue our work to develop our innovation pathways work, not listed here, but that also was supported by our innovation pathways grant funding as well. Work at the elementary level included continued supports for our new literacy curriculum, report card revision work, our related arts teams, support for our new Spanish model at the middle school, No Place For Hate work, and supporting our middle school science teams with appropriate scaffolding for our new middle school curriculum. So a lot of, a lot of good solid work happening. We know that curriculum is a dynamic process. We're never done. So we're going to continue to work to support our teachers and thank our teachers for those efforts over the summer months.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent. So moving on into, I want to bring a summer budget update to the committee. That's up to you, ma'am.
I think maybe if you all have any questions for Laura, maybe we can stop here and ask, because we're gonna pivot. Do you have any questions about summer work? Other than, well done. Thank you so much.
We're engaged in the process.
So we have some updates to do with you on the budget and we'll be, multiple folks will be chiming in here. On May 18th, I provided a superintendent's report to you that's linked here in the blue text. You can find that back. If you happen to print, I updated the report in the last hour because I saw some, just some sentences that had to be corrected in that report. The most updated version is posted on the website right now. So, you know, over the summer, we always learn of things that are coming along, changes. And we got the governor's budget, we got the budget, state budget now signed by the governor. We had some enrollment increases that happened. We saw some coming last fall. If you remember, we were really excited to see that our high school enrollment at the freshman level was coming in around 30 students higher than what we were anticipating. That has impact in terms of how you staff your buildings and the model that we have put forward. I will be giving an annual October 1 enrollment report to you next month to update you on that because October 1 is the date that we do official enrollment for the year for state funding purposes. So in that way, the first thing I want to talk to you about is the PRISM grant award. So we're gonna combine two elements of the superintendent's report here. I'm gonna talk to you a little bit about our approach to the PRISM grant. And then Assistant Superintendent Friend will talk to you about the PRISM grant itself that's in the strategic update section of the superintendent's report. I'll point out to our new members, these strategic updates, when we label them here, those are the items that then we direct back to specifically our strategic plan and the superintendent evaluation structure. So, that being said, we did get our PRISM grant award. It actually was not even official until when, Ms. Friend? Sometime last week, wasn't it?
Right.
When it was officially awarded and we got that recognition from DESI. So in that way, we were provided some money in the staffing to boost our literacy program. But there were limitations to the structure of how that could be put together. So we strategized, how can we maximize the tutoring model that we envisioned for our grant with the limitations of the grant? And so, we could only offset salaries of one human being per elementary according to the requirements of the grant. So our tutor model was not going to work. However, what DESI did approve is that we could apply that to a current literacy coach in the district that works with K-3 students, thus freeing up operational dollars for those salaries to do those other two elements. And so that amount was $231,000. And we've apportioned that $170,000 in the operational budget towards part-time tutors and $61,000 towards materials, because a cap on materials came in at $25,000. So we needed that additional 61 to get us as close to the $100,000 offset that we'd afforded in our budget last year. So here, the long story short on that in terms of the PRISM grant, this is a budget neutral move. There is no impact to our budget based upon this. But I wanted to show it to you so you had an idea of the structure that we put forward it. So with that, though, I will now turn it to Assistant Superintendent Friend to just talk about the PRISM grant plan in general.
And the grant approval for the committee's?
And the grant, pardon me, I meant to review that piece. So one of the reasons we asked for the consent agenda to go after the superintendent's report is because the approval of this grant is in the consent agenda. And we wanted to inform you about the grant before we approved the consent agenda because of that wonkiness we have with the state of school year started and the funds are coming in. So this was our approach to take care of that. So Assistant Superintendent.
So, you know, just approaching, adding to Superintendent Downing and what he's shared, I have provided for the committee just an overview of the work to date. If you need it, you can scroll down just a bit to the strategic update section. In large part, I think this is a review for the committee because I believe I gave an update in the spring, providing an update of the work completed last year. So this work that we engaged in last year really served as a foundation for the work, for the committee's. Just as a reminder, this is a five-year partnership that we have with DESI as being selected as only one of 15 districts in the Commonwealth identified as a PRISM 1 district. It's an honor and a privilege to be engaged in the work, and it also comes with support financially to the district and our work. So we see this as an incredible opportunity for Neshoba and for our students. So I have provided an update there and a review of the work to date. In large part, it involved creating a Neshoba literacy, leadership literacy team with a well-represented group of varied professionals across the district to build a shared understanding of the science of reading and where we currently are with our practices pre-K to 3. It's also including our pre-K partners, our community-based partners, because we recognize that the work of early literacy starts in pre-K, which is incredibly exciting to be able to dig deeper into our relationships with our community-based partners. We engaged in a deep literacy system scan through our consultants through TNTP. This is supported by DESI. This is not an onus or fiscal demand on Neshoba's operating budget. And then using all of that information, we are currently in the process of identifying priorities for the remainder of the grant partnership. So I will continue to keep the committee updated on those priorities, the action steps associated with the priorities. There's quite a bit of progress monitoring associated with the action plan from DESI and TNTP. So I'll make sure that I'm providing the committee with updates relative to that. And then if I may speak to just the organization of the grant for the committee's review, the total grant allocation was $336,390 for this fiscal year. And as the superintendent had mentioned, that DESI had provided some categories of how we could spend that total allocation. And those categories included salaries, stipends for the continued work as it relates to our literacy leadership team, supplies and materials, and contracted services. So we are going to be engaging with some deep pedagogy and content professional learning for our pre-K through 3 teachers for this purpose as well. Additionally, if I may add, that's not included here, is that we are fortunate to have this partnership with TNTP, which I've included a hyperlink to the organization in the update. They are coming on site. They are doing learning walks with our principals, with teaching and learning, with our coaches, and providing not only progress monitoring, but feedback for our team about what's happening in our classrooms. So all of this comprehensively is intended to really support and strengthen what we're doing for our students pre-K to 3 for literacy.
Fantastic. Do you guys have any questions about the PRISM grant specifically? On the overarching programming, but also the grant that you're gonna be asked to approve?
What is the term in the payout schedule for the grant? So is it lump sum upfront? Is it a certain dollar amount every year?
So whenever we have a grant, we have to expend and then seek reimbursement.
Okay.
So Laura and her team do a great job of writing the grant into a system with the state. They approve the expenditures as you see them in the grant, in the consent agenda. Then once we expended, we seek reimbursement through that same system to prove that we have spent it as agreed and go from there.
So when I look at these expenditures, is this all being spent over?
This is for FY '26. That totals for FY '26.
So this, okay.
Correct. Given that this is a new grant setup, the five-year will taper off. We'll learn more about that as we get closer to year two.
You say that this TNTP group is doing a learning log, isn't it quite?
Learning walks.
Learning walks.
Sorry.
What's that?
So, learning walks are with an observation pool. And they visit classrooms. It's not evaluated, but it is intended to provide feedback to our principals, our coaches, and to our team about where we need to support and strengthen curriculum instruction priority areas. And that serves as progress monitoring to measure progress and impact of our action steps. So it's one way we see evidence of the impact of our outputs, if you will.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, let's keep it going.
Great. The next part I want to talk to you about in the budget update is an additional position since the budget was last voted. So over the summer, as we've done some analysis and looked at the reorg of the team chair model that we needed to look at, it was determined that we needed more support there. And so, our wonderful assistant principal at Center School, Megan Sanco, has been a team chair in her past and is an assistant principal, could fulfill a portion of some of those responsibilities. We know we're gonna be supporting the students at the eighth grade from one of our other team chairs in the district. Thus, we needed to sort of look at sort of a gap of what are the other IEPs that need to be covered. So we determined a .6 position needed to be added to the budget in order to do this, knowing that Ms. Demant would also provide necessary supports for Center and Hail where needed. So that was part of our reorg process, an operational decision that we made, but it necessitates that. We'll come back to that when we get to the table because of the good news that we received from the state this year, we do have the funding to cover that position. The next is the middle school librarian. We removed three middle school librarians, if we recall, last year. They are library assistants at the middle school level. They are not teacher positions. And so, at the same time, Center School's enrollment at kindergarten did not actualize for four sections. So the teacher in kindergarten was, that position was redistributed to another grade level. The position was redistributed to third grade. You know, there were some staffing decisions about who's going where. But the FTE went to third grade. And the FTE for the kindergarten assistant for that classroom is the FTE we were able to utilize to return one of those three positions. And that person is rotating the three middle schools to ensure that the management, other collection, and the distribution of technology is being handled at the direction of the principals in those schools. So that, again, is a budget neutral decision. It was a reassignment of an assistant position.
And when we talk about FTEs, just for anyone who cares, it stands for a full-time equivalent. It's the term we use to describe one full-time Unit A member or UnifC member.
And the chair and I have an agreement that whenever I use EdSpeaks, she has free reign to interwell and define terms because it's so easy to do, right? So thank you for that. Also, a budget neutral position was assigning an IA for the freshman sophomore study. And this came out of necessity that as we had some enrollment changes at the high school that I talked about, it put us in scenarios where we need to maximize time of our educators. And thus, we needed to have that instructional assistant be working in that model. And this is something that we're gonna monitor and work regularly on. We were able to do this as we reassigned a special education assistant position, not the person themselves, but the position. And that is due to changes in AIEP or IEPs that occurred post-budget that allow us to do that and still meet the needs of the students across the district. So that was a budget neutral decision once again. So these are good news moments for us that we're able to bring some of these things after some of the springtime that we had and be able to do it in a responsible way. Next is the center fifth grade teacher. We had additional enrollments come to Center School at the end of June, beginning of July that necessitated we add another section of fifth grade at Center School. I'm gonna commend Principal Coppinger over at Center School. No brand-new principal wants to come into a scenario where they have to reorganize three classrooms into four classrooms and do all the communications, meeting with families. It's a very difficult task to do, and she did it with poise and expertise. So I really want to commend her on her effort to do that. So that was something that we had to do. And we did that because this committee has charged me with maintaining our classroom size standards across the district as they come, and that's the move that we had to make. We did know at that time that the forecast of what would be coming to us in terms of a budget, of the state aid adjustments that would be coming, that were made official and finalized. And it's at this point that I would like to turn it over to our Assistant Superintendent of Finance, Operations, and Safety, Mr. Rosswell Carrion.
Thank you, Superintendent Downing, and thank you to the committee. So the good news is that the net on our state aid has increased since we had a budget voted because we work off of the governor's proposal, because another release does not happen until after the budget vote, which is just one of the mechanisms of state legislature. So the summary of the state aid increase is the result of the different components of that, which includes charter school tuition out, charter reimbursement in, regional transportation reimbursement, and Chapter 70, which is where we saw the good news. I want to conclude, though, with notifying the committee that yesterday afternoon, we received guidance from DESI specific to regional school committees, that the committee would need to take action in order to accept that additional Chapter 70 funding. So this just happened yesterday afternoon, and you know, my text messaging and emails a buzz from other regionals. But we'll come back to the school committee once we've had time to digest that guidance and seek clarity and get any of our questions answered prior to bringing it to you all. So, thank you.
The last is on policy. So we'll pause there for any questions about budget and the moves that we've made since we last met.
Great. Sean?
I have a couple of questions. But regarding the librarian middle school position first, that position doesn't qualify under the Massachusetts library system to get resources from the libraries? Was it a shared position? Is that right, or?
I'm not quite sure, Sean Dorr. So that's something that we can look into.
Yeah, I recall from previous conversations, there were some issues with if you don't have a full-time librarian, you don't gain access to certain resources from MLS.
So?
And I just wondering if this does get us those resources or it doesn't in the middle school.
Yeah, that's a question we'll investigate. So, but I do know- So, but I do know, like, for instance, at Floris Sawyer, we're K-8 systems, so we're tied up pretty good there. And with Burbank and MRE being tied together, I think we would be, and we have a certified librarian at MRE, we would have to look into the Center-Hale model to see if that would make the mustard there.
And then, my next question was about the fifth grade in Center School. The school choice didn't have any impact on that, right?
We did not open school choice at fifth grade.
And then, the last question, is there any guidance on the potential impact of federal funding changes on the budget?
Mr. Moll Karen.
Yes, no pertinent question. We'll cover this a couple of different times in the FY twenty-seven budget season. So the FY twenty-six federal money that we received, most notably through our title grants and our IDA special education grants, was already settled in the FY twenty-five federal budget. So the FY twenty-six budget at the federal level will impact potentially the FY twenty-seven grants that we receive. So this, we'll discuss this at the budget season. No impact to this year, and we'll bring both the title grants, the ESSA grants, and the IDA grants to you for approval prior to the end of October.
Thank you.
Any other budget questions?
Just a general question about when state aid increases after we voted a budget. Can you remind us how the community, I guess, and new members, and even me, why did that when we voted a budget, state aid increases, the money gets applied to different places within our operational budget and not returned to the community?
This is the guidance we received yesterday afternoon at three o'clock that Mr. Moll Karen is going to update the committee on at the next meeting.
Okay.
So we're clear what road shall be traveled?
Yeah.
Got it. Okay.
Any other budget questions?
I just have a comment. I'm sorry if it's off-topic. But with regards to the PRISM grant, like, that's a huge win, right? And I may make myself stone-stupid here because I haven't read anything, but like, are we going to share with the community that, you know, this is a win, and we're now, it's beginning this year, we're using it, like, just to kind of highlight the efforts that have been put in and what we have achieved, or, you know, what you have achieved, just because some we have achieved, everyone has achieved. But like, I think it's nice to kind of boost up how great this is, right? And make sure that we're highlighting the accolades that the schools are receiving, so.
Okay.
Because it's great for us here to hear all of this and know the efforts you've put forth, but I do think it needs to be shared. And your superintendent's report that comes out, I think a lot of people do read that, and just to blast one out.
We have the click data to tell us that they do, so that's good.
The common.
The common, yeah.
Yeah, and I think it's just great to just put a shout-out in there, so people feel proud of, you know, and it kind of helps ease what we all stomached with budget last year, to know that we've got this, you know, great school system and a feather in our cap, so.
So it sounds like you're in favor of accepting the grant, so that we can move forward with our efforts.
Yes, yes.
The number is kind of shocking. It's such a big and impressive grant. It's going to take, it's going to hopefully plug a hole also, like, the whole state's grappling with around literacy programs and how the research is kind of pushing us in a different direction now toward the science of reading. And so, not only are we kind of addressing something, a problem that data was showing us, but Laura's getting all this money to do it, so, yeah.
And I think the thing is, is that they, you know, again, outside these walls is maybe that, oh, we spend a lot of money in the school system, but this is like an amazing thing that we're getting, that we are actually getting money from. You know, we've worked hard to pull money in. And I just think anything that comes across our plates, we're so fortunate to hear about it here, but I do think we need to toot the horn outwards to the community so they really know.
Do you want more than the three people watching this meeting on YouTube to know that?
Just a few. That's four, okay.
There's three. I will conclude that portion of the budget by pointing out in the table that after all these moves that I just described to you that were made this year through all the efforts that we detailed, it's to the positive of seventy thousand dollars. And I think that's a celebration for our school system. We are very proud that we've been able to do that work.
And because I think that there was some lobbying that was done to the legislature to explain to them that the minimal contribution for state aid is not enough.
That's right.
And so, did they double, they doubled it per pupil?
Yes, they did. It went from, the statute is thirty dollars, the governor started with seventy-five, and in the end, it was one fifty.
After a lot of lobbying?
After a lot of work.
Okay. So that would be worth putting out, too, for lobbying, the effort that went into getting that.
I will represent the Kill coin. Lancaster was in, yeah, just Lancaster. Lancaster Bolton. Lancaster Bolton, she serves on the Education Subcommittee as well, and was a small part of that. And Senator Kennedy serves on Joint Ways and Means and is a big part of that as well, as Ms. Kill coin.
Great. All right, so the next piece of the superintendent's report is about upcoming policy needs.
This is just an announcement.
So, policy Subcommittee people, ears open. Here we go.
So I believe we're meeting this Monday?
Yes.
To kick off our Policy Subcommittee. These are the topics that we need to bring forward this year to work on. Three of them have some date restrictions to them that we have to be attentive to as a committee. The first is the career and technical education access to students in middle schools. This is all part of the new law for CTE education in Massachusetts, career technical education in Massachusetts. So Assistant Superintendent Friend and I met with the superintendent and Ms. Heidi Driscoll Minuteman just the other day, and went through that and went through a model policy that I'll be bringing to the group for us to work on, because we'll need to do that pretty quickly to memorialize what DESI is directing us to do with policy.
Just really quick, are the dates in here, the dates, the deadlines, why, which these policies need to be approved?
Correct. So the regulations say we have to have by November first, the career technical education piece, competency termination and graduation requirements need to be finalized by the end of this calendar year. And then, we really need to be working on, these are going to help me, student cell phone use in school, as this is being right now debated at the state level, and will require the school committee to have a policy on this. So we need to be prepared. Looking at our practice at Neshoba Regional High School that is currently outlined in the handbook now, all indicators are it would look good to meet the requirements of ultimately what we may see come down from the state. Timeout spaces in school based on some recent rulings there, and we need to address homeschool participation in school-based activities as well. So those are just the topics I wanted to put forward to the committee. I know MASK has also put out some updated policies as well, but these are the ones that I wanted to make sure the committee is aware of that have been emphasized in superintendent's Any questions there? Okay. The last part.
Oh, Jan.
Yep.
Can you just, timeout spaces in schools, get a little bit more information about what that is?
We will when we bring the policy forward on that, but it's around secluded spaces in schools first.
In anticipation of the 2026 academic year.
Yep. So we will come forward with detail about that to the committee when we bring it forward.
You're present. I think you have two more things here.
Great. At this time, I would like to invite Mr. Jed Stefano, our Director of Innovation and Digital Learning, forward. He is going to give us a brief presentation on AI literacy at Neshoba Regional School District. So, Mr. Stefano, thank you for joining us.
My pleasure. Thank you for having me in person this year. It's great to be here. And yes, I will be sharing. Perfect, thank you. The work we're doing to enhance AI literacy NRST, and as a room full of educators and stakeholders, you know this is top of mind for a lot of schools and school leaders. So I'll only read two slides, probably the first and the last, but to me, they're compelling, and they've driven a lot of the work that I've been doing over the past three years here at Neshoba. By the way, I'm Jed Stefano, it's Director of Digital Learning and Innovation. I'm so excited.
Everybody knows you, Jed.
And I have to say, your YouTube viewership makes me feel better about our podcast listenership. Tony Frontier, the author of this book, AI With Intention, he says that if students see AI as little more than an answer engine to easily comply with assigned tasks, tomorrow's students will be adult and AI-dependent learners who are even less prepared for the future. AI tools have unlimited capacity to be used by students as tools for active intentional learning. If we want them to use them in these ways, they'll need to be taught how. And that's what framing the work ahead for this year. So to give you a little backup of where we have been the past two years, we had an AI study group that was looking at the emerging tools, the arrival technologies, Justin Wright calls it, and last year, an innovation team that did more of the same. This year, we're happy to bring forward an AI framework, more of a comprehensive stance on where we are, and you're going to get to hear Ryan's voice in a little bit. The AI framework is built upon an AI handbook for a district, which is a comprehensive stance and description of where we are, what do we believe, and what's the current understanding of generative AI, which is the newer version of AI, which is not new at all. The AI Classroom Guide, and this is an expansion and a growth of the Guidelines document I shared with you last year, and I was pleased to work with or have a conversation with Mr. Simon last year, and I hope that's the beginning of our annual conversations as well. An AI Resource Guide for educators and for students. And then, this year, we're going to be launching AI Leads, which is modeled after our curriculum facilitator lead positions when we bring in new curricular initiatives as well, getting some experts trained to share that knowledge and be the lead learners in the district, and then be part of the professional learning as well. There will be an optional book study around this book, which ties in with our Full Day PD on March twenty-seventh, where Tony Frontier will be our keynote speaker. So you're going to get to hear his voice recurring, and it's one, his messages really resonate in terms of the next steps of what we're thinking with AI and the impact here at Neshoba. So I'll share with you the recommendation of that book, but if you want to learn more, both this article and then this podcast episode, the links are all in the slides. I'd really recommend them, and it's a great way to ground the thinking about the messages and why we want to bring them here. So when we look at the work we have done and the work that will be brought forward this year for teachers and students, I mentioned the left side, the teacher side, and then for students, the Classroom Guide. And the Classroom Guide begins with this poster that's going up in all high school classrooms right now. It's designed to be a six-through twelve model, and there are a lot of versions of a stoplight model and a lot of degrees, and we're starting with a red light, green light position on whether, when, and how AI might be allowed, might not be allowed. Curriculum lessons, the launch of Gemini, and Gemini is Google's large language model. It's the only one that has a data privacy agreement, age-appropriate content, and guardrails. Tutorials, resources, and then upcoming family guides and resources. So all of this is in alignment with DESI's AI strategy, and as we know, DESI moves quickly on some things and not quickly on others, and this is one where they're really being very intentional. I'm happy to be part of two different groups with DESI that are really focusing on AI. So the work we're doing is in alignment with the recommendations and guidance from the state. So here's what we don't want to see. Teacher uses AI to create student work, student uses AI to complete that work, teacher uses AI to grade it, and the student then blows it off because it's meaningless. So what's missing from that structure? What I would say is missing from that structure is the actualized AI. And what I mean by that is authenticity and intention. I didn't have the guts to tell our entire populace that AI would be mandatory this year, but if I had the guts, it would have been to say that authenticity and intention remain mandatory in the age of AI. So how do we preserve that authenticity and intention? Better yet, how do we activate teaching and learning through engagement that can't be outsourced to AI? So it can happen in the classics, right? All these pieces that pull in collaboration, pull in communication. But the reason those are effective interventions when faced with AI, when faced with the ultimate cheat button, is to provide what Tony Frontier calls transparency and explainability, because that's the question that's facing us as much as which tool do I use, is what do I do with the piece that was turned in? So he talks about transparency as the documentation of the steps and thinking, and then explainability in terms of explaining, expanding, and reflecting on the learning process. If those two pieces are absent, that's an opportunity to have a conversation with a student instead of being overly reactive. And it also might head off a lawsuit, right? So to that point, the development of the AI Handbook for the district and the AI Classroom Guide, as I said, the handbook is a larger structure, and the Classroom Guide is meant to be for teachers and students to use today, tomorrow, Friday, as we open up Gemini for student use on Friday. So I mentioned this poster. I won't read it to you, but I'll talk about really getting a look at when AI is not allowed and when AI is allowed. When it's not allowed, it's in order to demonstrate individual knowledge and skills, right? When it is allowed, so that's the why, this is the how. How might we recommend AI is used? Feedback, revision, thought partnering, depth in research, with citation, all the guidance is in there. So the categories give you a sense of what we're talking about, the creative and conceptual process, the drafting, the answering questions, the thought partnering, and with warnings along the way. So whether it's providing that feedback, whether it's using assistive tools, we want to give those guardrails and warnings as to keep this in mind throughout that process. Having the citation and the documentation, it's essential for citation, but it's also essential for that transparency and that explainability as well. Thinking about not outsourcing the learning, whether it's through the instructional design of the teacher or the projects that students are creating, not outsourcing the learning or that design as well. So having this already, we're ten days in, and Assistant Principal Dan Walker has, he received, actually, he really did receive this comment in the cafeteria before school. Student told him, "Thank you for making these guidelines. We're all using AI already, so it's really helpful to know when we can and when we can't use it." And that's the whole intent, is all of these tools are in pockets, in devices, even when certain items are blocked. There are features within the tools, as we know, where generative capacity is there. So what we want to do is really provide that guidance, so that period by period, the rules don't change, because that's not good for anyone. So on Friday, there's a four-minute, four-and-a-half-minute video that all classrooms at the high school are going to see. I just pulled out a little bit of it so that Ryan could be embarrassed.
AI can support your learning and creative processes, but AI may only be used with permission from a teacher. If you're not sure about using AI, best time to talk with your teacher.
The sound is coming out of that computer. Do you mind turning that Alida Camac any louder?
If you just turn it on, it happens.
I'll try it again. I'm not sure if it's coming out of the projector or your computer. Let's try it again.
AI can support your learning and creative processes, but AI may only be used with permission from a teacher. If you're not sure about using AI, best time to talk with your teacher is before you begin using AI.
Remember, AI is a technology, not human. It can think for itself or for emotions, it's just a great at picking up patterns known as training. Since AI does not hear, it can and should make decisions which you will place important in the other.
AI hallucinations.
So since we can't hear it, unfortunately, I'll apologize for that.
Just so you know, Jed, we probably all of us could hear it, maybe people at home couldn't.
Okay.
Good job. You have a job, right?
I almost made him read it live. We don't know each other well enough. Yeah, it's really great, and it's, they're voicing over, in a way, I know that will be listened to more than my voice might be listened to, but it's really voicing over what is it that we care about? How are we thinking about the integration of these tools? And then what are we hoping to see, both by the teacher practices like these, and then the student practices like these? Elevating the conversation off of how are we cheating, how are we blocking cheating? And really thinking about how are we leveraging a really powerful tool in ways that happening inside and outside of school for preparing students for their future. So why Gemini? I was really heartened to find it's the only tool that provides this level of protection. So if a district chooses to not allow, I think they're foregoing these safety measures that I think are pretty critical when we know that students are using AI tools, right? So ensuring that we've got enterprise-grade data protection where the student's data is not exported to feed the large language model. It is compliant with FERPA-CAPA. School administration retains control over that access. There is additional safety filtering where there are checks that go through. There's an onboarding experience that all students will go through the first time they get on Gemini. There are critical thinking tools. They call them their learning tools, where there are double-check features, there are links to actual sources and citation guidelines. So it's really giving the tools to think about how are we using AI as a learning tool. And as I said, it is integrated with our own filtering. So if we're thinking about possible, the unfortunate possibilities, this is the only way we can ensure that we know about it. So those conversations would be picked up by our filter and passed on to our right intervention. And the last slide I said I would read to you is the syllabus language that's going into all high school syllabus syllabi right now, which says, with help from Tony Frontier, "AI tools may be used to support creativity and original work, but only with instructor approval on assignments specifically designated as AI-appropriate." And I like this message best of all. Academic dishonesty involves any attempt to take credit for knowledge or skills that you don't actually possess as your own. If you cannot explain your work after it's been completed, it may or may not be evidence of academic dishonesty. However, it is evidence that you haven't internalized that knowledge or those skills yet. If that is the case, I need to know so I can help you take the next steps necessary to learn. A really respectful and dignified conversation. So with that, I will say thank you very much, and I look forward to giving you an update as to where things go.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Any questions around this new direction?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Well, let me go to Scott, and then I'm gonna go to Shandra.
So first of all, thank you, Mrs. Stefanowicz and the administration for, you know, taking the time to put together this framework to help educate our students on how they can and can't or should and shouldn't use AI as a tool in their learning. It begs the question of, are we actually teaching the students how to use AI? And is it being integrated into our teaching? Because if you think of it as just another tool that we're gonna have in society going forward, like a computer or a cell phone, you need to learn how to use it. And I know I personally have had some disappointing experiences with the tools so far. But arguably, you'd say it's because I didn't use them properly, or you could say that they're loudly tools. But, you know, are we actually teaching the students how to properly use these tools?
Mr. Stan? Uh, yes. And beginning at the elementary level, building awareness to literacy to fluency, that is the goal. And coming through curriculum lessons, and even starting on Friday when they're hearing about what are hallucinations, what is bias, what is a deep fake? Not learning just with AI, but about AI, about machine learning to the extent necessary to understand how it operates and how a predictive mechanism algorithm works. So yes, to answer your question, that is the goal.
We built some structures into place, Mr. Powell, in terms of particularly at the K to eight level as we build our aligned schedules across the district. They're gonna give Mr. Stefanowitz some opportunities to do some of that professional development with teachers through their professional learning community time that is designated. So we've built some structures that are gonna give us some avenues to do that work.
Thank you.
Shandra?
Uh, maybe tying off of that from Scott, I think there's been some emerging research that AI might be hurting students' critical thinking skills. And I'm very much not saying that that means we shouldn't use AI or do anything with that, but that the way that AI is used is really important. So it's good to see this work in anything that is helping students maybe work with AI and use their critical thinking skills instead of offloading critical thinking skills to AI is good. I see some of that in this guidance, so that's good. I did have a question about Lightspeed and Gemini and that kind of thing in terms of safety of students, and was wondering who gets notified if there is something and how that process works? Is that a tech problem or academic problem, or who deals with that?
I know I get notified. The superintendent gets notified in cases where, you know, it would reach a certain level of concern. The building principal is also notified, and we respond. I can tell you that we respond immediately, you know, as well as who to your technology manager. So we have a pretty tight process in place to be notified at different levels.
And not just during school hours.
And not just during school hours.
And then I was a little curious, this is very clear about expectations around students. Are the expectations around teacher use of AI as clear?
That's, I mean, that is the goal of our March twenty-seventh PD day. And I know that feels like a lifetime away. So one of the tools, for example, is our AI Resource Guide, which is really led by use case, not by tools. What we don't want to do is just present, here's Magic School, School AI, Diffit. They're great resources, but if we're just putting all those items on the table, it's really not, there's no pedagogical focus to that. So really leading with the use case and saying, is it that you just want to translate a document? Here's maybe the right tool for the job. Is it that you want to differentiate this, you know, one lesson that's your go-to lesson for the past fifteen years? This might be the tool for that job. Is it that you want to create an upper-level chatbot that has a very enclosed, what they call a garden wall, as you know, environment where it's completely monitored and a safe space for students to have that interaction? Those are the things we're modeling kind of piece by piece.
If I may add to, the AI Leads being connected to supporting our teachers' professional learning as well in that model to support their understanding of the advocacy, the opportunities there. The AI Leads will be building-based under Mr. Stefanowicz's direction. We are looking at having two AI Leads per building with three at the high school as another set of infrastructure of support and professional learning for our teachers.
I have a new question.
Sure.
Can you just, can you remind me, is this a stipend position? Is this, how does this work?
It will be extra duty, not a stipend position, but it will be extra duty. And we are also using some Title IV funding, grant, one of our grant funding to support this as well.
First of all, this is just so impressive, the thought that went into this. And I'm just kind of relieved that we are approaching, that we're integrating this into our students' learning experience. Because it is the reality of what's going on. Everybody's trying to figure out how to use AI, you know, and especially within education, how to do it without feeling like you're cheating, you know? But, so you said you're rolling this out to high school on Friday. But then I think I also heard you say, starting in sixth grade, or the posters are going up in sixth grade.
So this is guidance more for outside-of-school guidance. If students have devices, they are using AI at home, it's really to guide.
Well, that was my question, because like Chromebooks, you know, our sixth graders have Chromebooks. And so this Gemini tool, is that getting turned on for all Chromebook users? Or is that just?
The age requirement restricts it at this point.
Okay.
So they're not there yet, and honestly, we're not there yet, and I think those students aren't there yet. But I think building, going through this process where if they are beginning to use it, we can begin that literacy growth to then get to the more fluency model.
Great. Thank you.
For the layperson, can you just explain what Gemini is? Is it basically the equivalent of ChatGPT?
Yep. It's Google's proprietary large language model like ChatGPT or Claude or any of the others. But unlike some of the products like Magic School that a lot of people have heard about or others that are more what they call wrappers, they're powered by these large language models. Gemini or ChatGPT is the algorithm that powers that work. And it's less of a for-profit feel, in my opinion, than a lot of these products that came on the scene small and grew to compete with each other, and now are looking to really build partnerships with districts in a way that Gemini is baked into the workspace subscription that we already have and offering the safeguards that none other can.
And so basically, what you're trying to do is encourage kids, if you're going to use ChatGPT, maybe shift over to Gemini because it's safer. I mean, what incentivizes kids? Okay, so if a kid is looking to cheat, they're gonna use ChatGPT because you can't track it, right? So how, so that's the rub, is that we can try to get them to use Gemini, but they're probably, I mean, why would they? And why, and I assume we're paying extra for it, so like?
We're not.
Oh, it's already a part of this?
It's part of our workspace.
Okay, so I guess how do you encourage the kids to use a program that will have a record of everything they search and do?
Probably so that they could provide that documentation, that explainability. So that at least if there is a question of where these two paragraphs come from, the student can go into the, even if they used Gemini responsibly, they can go into that conversation and show that back-and-forth dialogue that they wouldn't be able to show possibly with another tool. So it's, it is for their protection, but yeah. I share your concern, because it's a concern of the world.
Wild, wild west.
True.
So following up on that, are you explaining to students that there is a data privacy agreement with Google?
Yes.
And the benefit to them of that? And that might be a reason why they use Gemini over ChatGPT?
I don't know how persuasive it would be, but I'll try. Yeah, knowing that it is the safe route that we're recommending, and explaining that it does track what they would hope it would track, at least in terms of being able to recall that conversation.
I have a lot of concerns, if I'm gonna be honest with you. I work overseeing AI in medicine, so I've overseen, you know, in a lot of governance around human subject studies with the use of AI in medicine, diagnostic, particularly radiological, and these are, it's very new technology. And I, my concerns are so deep that I'm having a hard time parsing them. I agree with you that, you know, students are using this already, and giving guidelines is important. But I guess my question is, do you have a plan to evaluate this set of guidelines and how they're actually implemented? Do you have an idea of benchmarks that you're looking for? Do you know what I mean? Like, how are we evaluating whether or not this is effective?
That's going to be one of the first goals of the AI Leads group, is determine what are those benchmarks? What is the feedback, getting feedback from students as well as from their teachers as to what the use is? Because we can presume student use, but hearing from students, and Ryan's a great example of explaining, and not to put you on the spot, but explaining being grateful for a tool that they're already using. So it does put us in that tricky position.
Yeah. In Google Classroom, do you have the ability, I know the way it's used often in higher ed, to monitor, for example, essay writing? Can you, can an instructor go back and look at the live essay production to assess whether or not generative AI was kind of copied and pasted in?
Yep, we have the tools, so that if a teacher can watch, it almost looks like a video playback. And if there's a three-paragraph paste, doesn't necessarily mean that it was an act of plagiarism, but it certainly could invite conversation, tell me where this came from. And there are ways to do that generation completely within classroom as well.
And I saw, you know, the citations. I'm assuming that a student cannot cite Gemini? That they have to ask Gemini for its cited sources? And then do they cite the sources that Gemini is citing? Is the expectation that they are going to those primary sources to verify it's not a hallucination?
So one of the pieces of the guidelines in that is when it does provide those, that learning support, it does provide the link to that source, and that source would be cited. If Gemini is used for a back-and-forth, give-me-feedback, then Gemini would be cited as the dialogue tool. But if it's just the research tool, then the source itself would be cited.
So hypothetically, I'm a student, I'm writing an opinion essay. I've used Gemini as a thought partner. I would cite within my essay under my own opinion, you know, that the thought was concocted sort of in concert with Gemini? Or how, like, I'm just wondering what that citation connection is.
It might look like, and there's a sample in that citation page, but it might look like something like Gemini was used as a partner or Gemini was used for feedback to help me clarify my position, to enhance my persuasive language, something to that effect. Not to add to the opinion, but to maybe help clarify the communication of that opinion.
That's my question, so that I, as the instructor, could go, I could look through the conversation and make what is arguably a really gray distinction between that was form in your opinion and that was helping you to sharpen your opinion. Do you know what I mean?
I do.
And that, to me, feels really iffy.
I think that what you're wrestling with right now is like the world of AI.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, and like, this is in contrast to a kid just opening up ChatGPT, getting it to write it completely for them, then saying, please put this in tenth-grade language.
Oh, we see it in the medical school. We see it way beyond high school.
And then not copy-pasting it, but voice texting, reading it and voice texting it into a document. There's so many ways that this is problematic, that we can't possibly cure for all of them. But I think that at the beginning of this road that we're on, I really do appreciate the effort. Jillian, all of your concerns are noted.
The AI Leads, what are their qualifications and what would their sort of duties be? And I realize maybe I'm going to end up, maybe it's better if you and I can discuss, sort of, if you're available. I'd like to pick your brain about it, but.
Sure, we're developing that right now, the AI Leads, and it's interest-based, it's voluntary. Well, voluntary, it is a type, or extra duty, excuse me.
I'd be a top partner with you.
Sure.
Yeah.
And to your question about the opinion assignment, that would be an assignment where I think the teacher, who, that's probably a near and dear assignment, would probably right off the bat say, this is an AI-not-allowed assignment, right? If it's a composition, not evaluating the opinion, that might be a different conversation. But the teacher, every teacher has the opportunity to say, this is a no-AI-project-unit classroom.
But the district will not be providing guidance to the teachers. Opinion pieces should not be written in concert with a generative AI model. That will be up to the individual instructor.
I think that, yeah, I think we're getting down to a granular level that we might not be really prepared yet for. So let's, why don't we move beyond this and just say that, again, thank you so much. Before you go, though, Ryan, did you want to weigh in on this at all from the student perspective? Like, what are you seeing, what are you thinking and feeling?
Of course, I mean, if we don't do something like this or related to this, there will be kids going on their personal devices, searching on ChatGPT and doing everything that we're worried about on Gemini. So I think at least having this as a structure where it can at least be kind of put forward to the teachers and just have it kind of on the record. It doesn't solve, it doesn't solve the, kind of, the whole problem with it, but the problem's gonna exist regardless of like AI in general. So I do think it's kind of important to have some type of, at least some structure or guideline.
I would say, yeah, one of the cases that came up this past year was a hangup.
Yep.
Check, hangup. That, the, was a query that a teacher found in favor of a student who used AI for an assignment, and the claim was, there was no clear expectations that I couldn't, right? So just framing what's acceptable, what's not acceptable for completion work is advanced work in preparing for those types of moments where we do look into, is there an academic integrity issue that we need to look into here? So that alone is a big advanced step for us to move forward, particularly as that exists, will exist in all the places you described.
I also just keep thinking about my district, and maybe others as well feel this way. We don't have a person who is tasked with us. And so it's actually falling on the shoulders of a handful of people and is being piecemealed, and kind of terribly so. And we're fumbling through it. And we're fumbling through it. And so I actually appreciate that this is something that you're asking Jen and his team to do and to begin. And I love that the March speaker is gonna be the author of that book. So I'm looking for more free books, maybe, uh, no. We want to thank you so much for your time and all of this attention. We appreciate it.
Thank you. I appreciate your interest.
All right, thanks. Okay, guys, so moving right along. I'm like lost in my ideas here. All right, so we actually have to go back to the consent agenda. That is next. So I have a motion that I can present to you all. I move to approve the consent agenda of September tenth, twenty twenty-five. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thanks, John Scott. Any discussion? All those in favor, you can raise your hand. Any opposed? Well done, so the consent agenda passes. So moving on. Hi, Ryan.
Hi, Ms. J.
So as you can see on the agenda, we have no new business and no unfinished business. And so before we adjourn, I did kind of jump past the school committee chairperson update, so I'm gonna circle back to that and just say a couple of things. Over the summer, the workshop we engaged in, as we always do, just kind of reasserting our goals, this has been pushed down to the subcommittees, and I hope all the subcommittees have kind of communicated over email or set up, at least your first meeting, so that your first meeting, you can establish who the chair will be, who the secretary will be. And then I sent you guys a long email on the process and with all the templates and such, so you can get the subcommittees working. So that's that about the subcommittees. I have added an agenda item in all future agendas that will be subcommittee advisory reports. You do not need to feel compelled to report, but we will mark it in the agenda so that if there's something to share, we can update that. Kirk is, I think, or is Amy as the vice chair, going to act as the reporter of the school building committee? Maybe Kirk will?
Sorry, I didn't hear it, because you were pointing the other way.
The school, sorry. The school building committee, because it is chaired by a member who's not at this committee. Can you be the designated chairer of what's happening there?
Oh, without a question first?
The school president?
No, I can do that, you're fine.
Okay. And so just subcommittees, make sure that you're planning for that. The last thing I want to point out, so you guys all have something shared with you. Like I said, love free books. Kirk has, he had a few extra copies, so he's sharing these with you. What is this, Kirk?
So this is Unleashed. This is the book our entire leadership council read this summer. It was sort of the launch point of how we let our retreat. And the basic premise is under sort of these ideas and concepts of, excuse me, I just lost my place. Of the key elements of trust, love, belonging, strategy, and culture, how you can unleash the members of your organization to do great things. And so our approach is really in working with the employees and students of our district. We are gonna gain a lot more by trying to understand, support, launch, love our folks to get that work done than we will in other methods. And so this book is that approach. I encourage you all to read this, please, because then you'll gain an understanding of how I'm leading our leadership team around the good work that we do in our schools. So please read it.
Great, thank you so much for that. Appreciate it. So normally, guys, at the end of our agenda, we would have items for next agenda. It's not there, so we're, I'm gonna skip right over that. However, the planning calendar is always there for you, and I'm just an email away. If there's anything that you want to see from the next agenda, Kirk and I will be planning it. It's, you know, the planned calendar's already filling up, so, look for that. And that kind of brings us to the end, so I'm gonna move to adjourn. Got it? Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, everybody, have a great night. Thank you.
Thank you.